I will call the June 18th, 2018 city council meeting to order. Call of the roll.
John Hawkins?
Here.
Matt McKinney?
Here.
Brian Miller? Jim Talbot?
Here.
Logan Welch?
Here.
Call for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A petitions, communications, and requests. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in case of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting but may ask city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Come on up Connie, yes please.
Connie Evans, 1621, need a core question for the Iowa. I want to commend you on another good cleanup day. The council members were out there with all their muscle healthy and it was very much appreciated. And my other point is, who's in charge of and what's being done about the West entrance "Welcome to What You City" sign? The whole "Welcome to What You City" part is gone and all we have is frame and rock.
The sign had came off and the street department was replacing it but as we're nearing the end of our rebranding and new website and logo, that's kind of been on hold so that the new logo goes on it as opposed to the old one.
The old one was damaged and can't be put up temporary until the new ones are ready?
No, the old one was repaired but they were told to hold off until we have the new logo to go up there.
I thought you might mention the food pantry tomorrow.
Oh sure. The St. Thomas Quies is hosting the mobile food pantry tomorrow. I think it's four to six.
Yeah.
Anyone who's available in the noon o'clock time can go and help unload the truck. And other workers will help you distribute from four to six. Is that all? Thank you.
Thanks Connie. Saved me a little bit. Anyone else have anything? I think that was all I had too. B is minutes and claims. The following items have been non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. I'd like to know how you would like to do the minutes of June 4th, 2018. Resolution on payroll for period ending June 9th, 2018, and paid on June 15th of 2018. And a resolution on bills and the funds list.
I'll move to approve one, two, and three collectively.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item C on the agenda. First item is an update. Discussion on long-range planning on local trail systems. Kent?
Thank you, I'm Kent Harms. We have here Brian Lammers. He's the executive director of the Hamilton County Conservation Board. And we have Emily Naylor. Emily's with Shive Hattery Consultants and she's helped us with some preliminary planning and discussion on that, just informally on that too. So, one thing, we've been, the Conservation Department and the city has been partners for several years. In fact, it started, I think it was 1987, with the Army Corps of Engineers Feature Design Memorandum Study for the Boone River Trail itself. And that kind of started the trail, whole trail discussion with that trail as well as Hamilton County on here too. So, we've been partners for many, many years. We want to continue to move forward and talk about getting a trails plan itself on that too. So, when we look at this and we've, I don't think the county's ever had a formal trails plan, have we? On that, and when we talk about that, the reason to have a trail is to provide safe trails, shared route connections through Hamilton County, promote wellness, enhance quality of life, support economic development, create connections to regional trails or shared routes. And once completed, the city and county can seek funding through grants and other forms of funding on that too. So, with that, on that, and right now, what other counties and communities are doing, not only are they trying to map out trails and connectivity, but they're also trying to do shared routes. Like for instance, I ride my bike a lot and obviously there's not trails, there's the Boone River Trail, which is wonderful, but I like to ride to Brushy Creek and Doliver Park and Lehigh and around there. That this would, this plan would get all the different county roads together within Hamilton County, there's surrounding counties, and let that be known for a shared route, a marked route where people could ride on that too, to be able to do that. With that, I know Brian's been working on different areas to look at, like Jewel to Ellsworth has a wonderful trail and they're looking at maybe in the future connecting that with Little Wall Lake and some other areas down there too, so. On that, and Brian is probably more knowledgeable of this study than I am, but promote wellness. A few years ago, the University of Northern Iowa did a study on the economic and health benefits of bicycling in Iowa on that, not only from, obviously, a wealthy health standpoint, but enhanced quality of life. And the city's been a smaller part of it, but Brian, I don't know if you want to go in and talk to about the Boone Forks Regional Plan on that a little bit?
So, the Boone Forks Regional Plan is something we've been working on for the last of these four years now, going into our fourth year. This is a partnership with Boone County and Webster County on regional planning. We're trying to think outside of just marketing and bringing people into our little park or our little area. We want to do it on a regional basis because we can attract such a larger crowd. Through this program, one thing they found out, this got started by the Iowa Parks Foundation a few years back with the Iowa Legislature. They put some money towards this program to get it up and started. The first one was completed over in Dubuque County. We are the second one in line to get started on one, but we're also in competition with some other regions to do that. One thing they found out with this is people really don't care who owns a park or a trail or a recreational area. They don't care if it's owned by the city, they don't care if it's owned by the county or the state, they just want to get out there. That's where we come in. We have so many resources in this county, so many resources in this region, that it just makes sense to bring people in and bring them into here and let them explore what we have and hopefully, you know, eventually move here as well. So, this is the program that we've been working on the last few years. We're trying to get this accomplished. We'll be, we are probably getting a lot of the, what they call low-hanging fruit as far as the little stuff, mobile tours, attractions, area attractions, and opportunities that we have. We're trying to market that right now. Our marketing is being worked on this year through our planning committee. We hope to bring the University of Iowa in on this program as well. And this is something that will probably grow in the next couple of years. But one thing that was highlighted in this plan, and obviously we didn't pull this stuff off for you because most of these things are like 50, 60 pages long, so if you want them, I have them, but we're not going to go over those today. But what that shows, or one of the highlights in here showed that trails were the most important piece, and that's what we're trying to get at. As Kent mentioned earlier, on that earlier slide, the very last one listed was going after trail funding. Without a trails plan, it's really hard to go after grant funding if you don't have your plan in place. So, that's kind of the heart of what we're trying to do besides economic and health benefits.
Thank you, Brian. And also on economic development with the study from the University of Northern Iowa, I think those that intentionally go to a trail to ride that trail spending on an average of $15 per person, and I think the biggest success story in this three-county plan has been the High Tressle Bridge. I don't know if anybody's been down there, but starting Madred, going all the way on that, but just the, and I don't know, do you know numbers for economic impact of either one of you for Madred and that surrounding area? But it's huge, there's ice cream stands, different types of restaurants, bars, it's opened up along the trail down there, and it's been wonderful and we would like to try to do that around here as well. Jim?
Kent, you asked about economic, I belong to Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation, and last month they had a nice article about Dallas County, Boone County, and the High Tressle Trail and all the other trails together. And on their impact, two counties, they were talking about $6.5 million with people coming in, bicycle repair, people eating at the local restaurants, consuming vast quantities of consumables, and kind of like, right, right. Anyway, they said for those two counties, about $6.5 million. I'll try to find that and give it to you.
And something that's exciting, I'm not sure of the timeframe, but the Reckon River Trail is going to connect to the High Tressle Bridge Trail itself, so. When's that scheduled? Do you know, I think next year or so?
Next year, 2020?
Yeah. So, that's going to be really exciting, there's going to be about 80 or 90 miles of trail all connected to on that. And again, one thing too, that we have a couple Midas slides, but the Midas Council of Governments is our six-county region area. What they want to do, they're working on an overall Region 5 plan to connect that. You can kind of see the different trails in there of, it's not real clear, but the different trails, like the green trails or the existing ones, but there's no connectivity. And what would be nice, and obviously, cost-wise and geographically, it might be difficult to connect those trails, but if you would have a shared route to show everybody about how they could connect to Twin Lakes or some other nice park in the area, that would be really helpful. And again, that's, we have this, and I don't think we have it on the website, but this is a document, and unfortunately, Calhoun County and Hamilton County do not have a trails plan yet too, so. And Brian, you know, Pocahontas ended up doing their own trails plan. Can you talk a little bit about that at all?
As Kent mentioned, out of the Midas Region Council of Governments, we're one of the two counties that don't have an active plan together. One thing Pocahontas County did is they kind of took it on their own with a, or their friends group, is create their own master plan. So, Pocahontas County obviously is a smaller county than we have here, but they're progressive enough, knowing that the Three Rivers Trails are part of their economic area, and that's something that they wanted to be able to not only showcase, but to enhance and grow off of that, and that's what they intend to do with their trail plan. So, it was done in-house, so there's ways to do this, but there's also ways to fund this, and that's part of the reason, you know, we were requesting earlier for grant dollars to help with that, or local grants to help with that project, because it shows our in-kind support going into this.
So, the goal would be, when we do get a trails plan developed, to seek funding grants for the trails construction, and these are just a few grants that are out there. The REAP Resource Enhancement and Protection Grants, statewide and regional transportation enhancement grant, State Recreational Trails Program, Region 5 Federal Highway Alternative Funds, Vision Iowa Community Attraction Tourism, and fortunately, I think most if not all of these help fund the three phases of the Boone River Trail. So, we would like to see that continuing, and I know for Webster City itself, our, the Park and Rec Commission has been working, what they would like to see done first is the trail extended from Boone River along White Fox all the way out to Kendall Young Park. It's such a wonderful park out there, but it would be nice if we could actually have a bike trail where it could connect out there too, so. And I don't know, Emily, I'm kind of throwing you on the spot, you have such a broad overview of the entire state, is there anything you want to add to that on what we're trying to accomplish?
No, just, you know, I've watched Central Iowa Trails Network grow and grow, and people like the 50, 60, 70 mile loops, and I don't necessarily ride that much in one day, but that's really what's going to take to, you know, really connect to regional trails and make a loop. And planning is absolutely critical with funding. You know, I joke, I say this a lot at presentations and conferences, but, you know, you don't just wish, hope to retire someday, you usually plan for that. We'll see what trails master planning, we really have to get out there, and it's not just lines on the drawing, there is some design criteria, we want to assess routes, we want to look at the different design solutions, whether it be like a protected bike lane or a shared use path, there's all kinds of different subtle engineering differences and depending on which lane you have available, those are all the things that go into the plan. So, route selection is a little more than just from A to B, so.
Sure.
And that, I didn't know how much you wanted Mr. Talk, you know, we'd be glad to answer some questions from you or the audience, but again, before we move too much forward, we have to get this plan done, and unfortunately, it does cost money to do it right. Brian and I don't have the expertise to do this, somebody like Emily or somebody else would need to help us guide through the process.
The one other piece that I wanted to show, Iowa DOT has an interactive Iowa bikes map. Switch it over. Just to highlight our area versus the rest of the state. Roughly, this area here is Des Moines. We're right here, I'll zoom in. So, you see the outline of the Briggs Woods Trail. And in Hamilton County, there's just nothing connecting to our major recreational areas that would be a big draw for recreation tourism here in the area. You can see how Fort Dodge is really kind of, and Webster County is really well ahead of our, our planning and our efforts, and how they've connected to an existing trail system up near Humboldt that connects to Eagle Grove. So, the plan would entail looking at avenues and paths to be able to take and be able to connect the existing recreational amenities such as Briggs Woods, Little Walt Lake, as well as the communities such as Jewel and Camera, and trying to connect them all and somewhat marrying the High Tressle Trail, and being able to draw visitors, tourists, and recreation goers like.
And our goal would be too, that the Boone River Trail was a good example, that we probably only had about 10 to 12% of local tax dollars paid for. The rest was done, the combination of state and federal grants.
So, moving forward, I think eventually there'll be opportunities for grant funding that may require matching dollars. There's a couple small grants out there, but obviously, the cost of some, a study of this magnitude would potentially be upwards of $20,000 as this can entail some very detailed analysis as well as a broad scope that'll encompass Hamilton County as a whole. And so, the question would be, is to move forward with that or do we kind of put this on the shelf for the time being and revisit it at a later time? Obviously with our plans to take the Briggs Woods Trail out to Kendall Young Park at some point, it would seem logical just to encompass that as part of a broader scope plan that ties into the county and what they may have in mind.
Well, I think we get, you know, we got to, if we look at the bigger picture, we're going to get more benefit from it, so it's definitely something we have to move forward with.
You're not looking for that direction tonight, right? No, this is just discussion that, it's been a while since we addressed the council. I know Brian and I, we had a joint meeting a couple months ago with the Parks and Recreation Commission and Conservation Board, and they're fully supportive. And like Brian said, is, we don't really have orders of who does what, and we've shared equipment and projects in the past that, you know, obviously, we do have to pay attention to which governing body is in charge of it, but again, it's, I think we probably have one of the better relationships of city and county, in both Hamilton County, Webster City, as well as other counties too, so.
Thanks Kent, Ron, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two is update report from Hamilton County Marketing Program. We'll get Kent again.
This is a perfect segue because everything we just talked about ties into everything that we're doing.
Yeah.
I feel bad, Missy and I rode into Kent a lot on the trails. He's like coming back through Dubuque and we've got like two miles under our belt. Rode 55 miles before I went to work this morning. Good evening, I'm Kent, and this is Melissa Bailey, and we're with OHP Marketing Services, and here to briefly talk about the Hamilton County Iowa Welcome Home Project. Turns out that this is, I think, a good time to just give you all an update on how things are going, and I felt like there was maybe a little confusion last month when the project was discussed, and I thought this could be a good opportunity to perhaps clear up anything there that might be of question. So, this is a joint project between the city and the county and the Business and Industry Board, and all three entities are represented here tonight. The project officially launched the final day, the 31st of January, so we've been at this live, so to speak, for about four and a half months. It encompasses the entire county, all nine communities and all points in between, so it's a joint venture, and it's been great to work with all the communities. We've learned a lot just ourselves in being out and about and meeting with folks. The main goal of the project is and has always been to recruit skilled labor to live and work in Hamilton County, Iowa. Anything good that happens beyond that is a bonus, but that is our main focus, and every day as we work on this project, we make sure that that's what we're thinking about in everything that we do. So, the website is definitely the backbone, the main part of what we're doing, and our social media pages and other things that we're presenting to the public is kind of in a support situation or almost secondary, but the main thing that we want to do is bring people to this website. You're looking at the desktop version, as you'll hear when Missy gives us some numbers, the mobile version is what virtually everyone is looking at this website with, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. As far as funding goes, the city, the county, and the Business and Industry Board pay OHP Marketing Services on a monthly basis to maintain the site, to work up behind the scenes, and again, Missy will shed more light on this, on our marketing campaign, to go out to the Frisbee Golf Tournament and get footage and video and incorporate that into the plan. So, that's what the month-to-month payments are doing. And then we have the partnership with Seneca Foundry, Webster City Custom, East First State Bank, Avon's Realty, Peterson Construction. Those are all commercial partners, and what they do is pay a fee to be involved in the campaign on the website in various degrees, and the money from those partners go directly to a marketing fund. It doesn't go to the city, it doesn't go to OHP, it doesn't go to the county. It's in a separate marketing fund, and all of those dollars then are used to pay for the marketing that we're doing. And I think there was maybe some confusion on how that was working last time. So, for example, Van Gogh's Medical Center recently signed on, they're not live on the site yet, but the dollars that they will contribute to this event, or to this project will go directly into paying for marketing, so that's how that works. We constantly remind ourselves as well of kind of the magnitude of what we're asking people to do in this project. We're not selling t-shirts, we're not selling tennis shoes. We are asking people to move from where they are, to possibly sell a house, maybe quit a job, and come to Hamilton County, Iowa, and live and start a new job. That's a pretty big deal. I mean, if any of us in this room right now were to think about, wow, I saw an ad on Facebook, or I saw a website, and did it inspire me enough that I am going to sell my house, quit my job, and move there? So, it's a pretty big deal, and we're happy with the results that we're getting so far, and Missy will shed some light on that. But again, that's something that we really, we think about. We love it here, we have a great quality of life and we have a lot to offer, but we're asking a pretty big thing for people from across the country to come and look at us. Can you pull up? On May 5th, I happened to be watching the news, and on NBC, they had a story, I don't know if anybody else happened to see this. But it's all the other communities and counties across the country that are facing the same challenge as us. We don't have enough people to do the work. And I thought that this was interesting because this is the kind of thing that we're up against. So, we're saying, come to Hamilton County, it's great, you'll love it here, we have all kinds of opportunity, we have trails, we have all these wonderful things, quality schools. But just to show you what some of the other places are doing, in Hamilton, Ohio, they're offering a paid fellowship, so rather than coming and being an intern for free, they'll pay you to do it. A free place to live, and up to $5,000 in student loans paid off. In Grant County, Indiana, $5,000 towards the purchase of a home if you move there. North Platte, Nebraska, $10,000 cash bonus to kind of live and work. And Niagara Falls, New York, $7,000 paid off from your loans. These places are all a little bigger than us, but these are the kind of things that we're up against as well as we try to convince people to kind of live and work in Hamilton County. So, with that, Missy has some numbers that she'll kind of dive into here and give you a little bit more about what's really going on behind the scenes.
Good evening, everybody. Are we ready for some numbers on stuff? First of all, let's talk a little about the difference so we're all on the same page. I got your mouse.
So, you're going to do it.
I'm going to do it. What a deal! Technology is a wonder. Alrighty, so first let's make sure we understand the concept of this, there's a confusion, and I don't want to talk for 20 minutes and then I lost you in the beginning. So, we have our website, and that's where we want people to go. We have our Facebook page for Hamilton County Welcome Home, we have Instagram, et cetera. That's kind of the, after they get to us, we still see quality of life, they're happening. But the main focus is to get people to our Facebook page. How do we get people, on our website, sorry. How do we get people to our website, alright? Well, the first phase we're doing is Facebook ads. That is not Facebook page that we have, is ads. So, you know when you search for, you want to buy a canoe or you want to buy tennis shoes, next thing you know on your Facebook feed up comes an ad for tennis shoes. People are watching those things and catching the information. So, what we're going to show you is, let's go down here, we're going to look first at our Facebook advertising, alrighty? So, the first thing we did was we selected our detailed, whoa, detailed targeting, alright? We are looking for people, is that going to go on the menu? We're looking for people and targeting those people, demographics, who are willing to move, who have the job skill sets that we're looking for, who are looking for this quality of life, who like rural living, who are willing to move. So, you're going to see our casting of nets, alright? So, the first net you're going to see that we started with is called the Surrounding States, and we cast our net to catch our fish that might be interested for life, this is my analogy for interest. And so, that's the Surrounding States with people with those demographics. Then, we did our best look, there are all the states outside of the Surrounding States, and then we have our retargeting, and those are the people who've come to the website in their tag, and I'll explain that in a second, and who have their page engagement, people that may come to our Facebook page. So, what you see here is what has happened with these, this advertising. So far, we have reached 207,000, almost 208,000 people, okay? The impressions means how many times they may have seen our ad in their Facebook feed. Now, this isn't the side minutia ads over here, this is right in front of them, alright? Now, something I will tell you is, you won't see these ads, because we don't spend our money to feed to our local people, but they money to feed to our local people, but they already know. We are going outside of that. Then we have, I'm going to scooch over here for you, we have the outbound clicks and that's the magic. When they see an ad, when it comes across their screen, our goal is that we want them to click and come to the website. And as of Sunday, we've had over sixteen thousand people click on that link and come and look at our website, alright? This is the marketing dollars spent so far that Kent talked about and that is the money from our partners. So, the average cost per click, that means we might show it to two-hundred-and-seven thousand people, they might see us several times on their page, but the average cost for each of these people is forty-two cents a click. We do not pay every time they see us, we do not pay all the times they see us, we only pay when they click through and come see Webster City's website, or Hamilton County, Iowa's website. So, then over here, we have videos. Videos are huge on Facebook. They are a huge trend and people are more engaged and they see a video ad come across their screen, which we will show you soon in a moment. We've had over eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-three views on our Facebook ads of our videos, okay? So, down here are our other two nets. When someone comes to our site, to our website, that fish is tagged, that they've been in our net. And so, that ad will be fed to them again and they go into the retargeting group. And you see that number continues to grow. If someone has come to the Hamilton County Welcome Home Facebook page, which that number is lower because it's organic growth, they will get tagged and come back into the net, alright? And when I go to the next screens, we're going to talk about what happens with that net. So, this is the results of Facebook advertising and the number of people who have come to our website. Clear his mind? There, here we go. Now, we're going to look at Google Analytics. This is behavior overview. This is what's happening on the Hamilton County Welcome Home website. So, let's look at a few things. First of all, we're looking at the page views. These are the number of pages that have been viewed by our users. These are the actual number of users that have come. This is their average time on the site, which means they may have been on our site for thirty minutes, they may have been on our site for two seconds. This is the average time they are looking at our site. Then we have this funnel number called bounce rate, which is kind of the hot button. But what we need to remember with this is, and bounce rate, by the way, is they saw it, they clicked, they came to the site, they left, they did nothing more. Versus the exit, which they came, they looked at the page, and that's all they looked at and they left. So, what's that mean with our fish and our nets? I'll give you the example. When somebody is looking on Facebook, and I'll give you the example of a Red Bull. And they see in one of our video ads that promotes quality of life is a person biking. And a Red Bull person sees that and he clicks on it and he goes to it, he goes, oh, I thought this was about cycling, I'm not going to go over here any further, okay? Now, they'll be tagged and they'll go back into that net, but if they don't click on it again, it doesn't cost us anything. So, you're going to have those fish that jump out of the net, those aren't the fish that are going to move, alright? So, that is what that all is, alright? And you'll see the pages when we do ads, Facebook ads, if we're promoting living here, we feed them to our live here page or our homepage. If we are promoting working here, we feed them to our work here page, alright? And then you'll see as you go down, the people looking at living at Camar, Webster City, Stratford, it's showing all the different places they're going to look at living, okay? So, now, we're going to look at our geographic locations. Now, when we started this, we all assumed that it would be the surrounding state, so it would really pop. Surprisingly enough, Texas is the number-one state of people looking at Hamilton County Welcome Home. Second is Iowa, third is Illinois, big concentration in the Chicago area, California, Florida, New York, Georgia, Missouri, Nebraska, and North Carolina, and the rest dropped in the two percent range. So, these are the people who are on the site having sessions, which means they're coming and they're looking. They're not going, oh, that's cute, go away. They're looking and they're having sessions, going to more than one page. Kind of interesting, huh, Texas? Alright. This is the list of top pages, alright? So, this is showing to us when they come, the pages that are looked at the most, alright? Live here, they're looking where they want to live. Homepage is also telling them about the different communities. Work here, they're looking at Camar, Webster City, Stratford, all the communities. They're looking at jobs, doing business here. They're also looking, let's see, we're looking at Custom Meets down here, and these are the top twenty-five, I think I did, alright? So, they're looking at living here, doing business here, working here, alright? So, now, we're going to look at is, here is our top fish, what's a really good fish? perch? I don't know, I'm not a fish person. I'd happy if I just get one on the line and get it on the shore. Alright, so, these are the people who have come to the site and are now clicking in interest on the outbound links. They have come here and outbound links means we have links to Indeed, workforce development, our corporate sponsors via Seneca Foundry, Custom Meets, the hospital, alright? And what you're going to see in this really long one is the multiple listings. They're looking at where's a house, they're looking at Indeed, where can I work, they're looking again at Indeed, they're looking at where to live, they're looking at Seneca Foundry, they're looking at Seneca Foundry, Avon's Realty for Houses, where to live, Indeed, Webster City Custom Meets. So, they're looking for housing and they're looking for jobs. Now, you may look at this and think, let's, four and twenty-four, out of all those, would we not flip if four and twenty-four families suddenly decided to move here? So, as the fish continue to jump into the net and jump out, we get to down to our bats, is that what I'm hearing?
Sure.
Okay, alright. Then, this is, as Kent referenced earlier, this is where people are coming to our site from. Mobile's huge, it's eighty-eight percent of our visitors, and desktop and tablet are about even. And that is the reason why sites that we build are mobile-friendly at all times. So, now, we will show you, these are going to be the videos, ads that are running now on Facebook, that are in people's feeds, that meet our target audience, that have jumped into our net, or come back into our net, or are new to our net, alright? Oh, sound, huh? Is there any sound?
No, not on dark connection.
Okay. So, this is promoting quality of life in Hamilton County, showing them all the things that are to do, different communities, things happening, different ages. And after they see this video, that is when they click and they will go to our website. And interestingly enough, this is the equality of life and living here, when people, when we do a new video, every time we do a video, because we also have still-shot ads, but videos always shoot to the top in viewership every single time. This is talking about working here, life in Hamilton County, job opportunities, that's where we attacked by the cows, literally looked at the lens of the camera. And how our county has so many things to do. This speaks to work here and, you know, this is part of the benefit of one of our sponsors, Seneca Foundry, and we featured their employees, working there, et cetera, giving them example. The amazing thing about doing all this was how many things in our county that you don't even know about, like froth or disco, okay? Any questions? And this is just a brief, kind of giving you the spiel of what's going on, what's happening, the numbers, so you can actually see where everything is coming from and what's happening. And the main reason for showing you the ads is, again, if you're not seeing, that's like you're not seeing anything happening, that's the reason, it's not be fit to you. So, again, getting them to the website, that introduction to the county, and to go to the different communities from there, so, alright?
Interesting, yeah, I wonder why that is, you know, Texas and California are one of the top two, it's interesting.
Everybody's wanting to leave California, it's too difficult to live there, stupid taxes.
You have any more you want to do?
No.
Okay.
We're going to have it in this round.
Yeah, alright, thanks very much. Alright. Item three is a motion on request for appointment of one council member to Community and Family Resources, North Central Iowa Opioid Task Force. Katie, did you want to talk on that?
Okay, I'm kind of being brief as I can. I'm sure you're all aware of what goes on in the news. There's this little, I shouldn't say little, opiate epidemic that's gone around the country. Just some basic information and then I'll make it as short as we can so you can get to movies. So, about nineteen ninety-five, Purdue Pharmaceuticals developed a new painkiller called OxyContin. It was an extended twelve-hour continuous relief pain reliever and it was guaranteed in writing that there would only be a one percent addiction rate. Purdue Pharmaceuticals, and this is all documented, looked and identified doctors that prescribed, people that might be an HMOs, didn't have a lot of face-to-face time with the doctors, prescribed opiates because, again, Purdue Pharmaceuticals guaranteed a one percent addiction rate. Invited these doctors, prescribers to all-inclusive trainings, whether it was Bahamas, Florida, somewhere nice, tropical, and then they went back and started prescribing opiates. If somebody went to their doctor and said, this ten milligrams is no longer working and it's wearing off about eight hours, instead of saying, we'll take a dose at eight hours, because they're really going on that ten, ten-to-twelve hour continuous release, they would say, double the dose. Based on their marketing and their research and everything that they've documented, we can now pretty much trace today's epidemic back to ninety-three, ninety-four, Purdue Pharmaceuticals. And so, we're now experiencing the effects of it. Community and Family Resources, along with Youth Shelter Services, wrote for a state targeted response grant to target opiate use in Iowa. CFR is one of the twenty-three Iowa Department of Public Health funded substance use disorder treatments in Iowa that have expanded medication-assisted treatment. So, what happens when someone uses an opiate? It screws up their pain signals, it screws up, and they can become highly addicted because it's like a heroin, it's just a synthetic form. When we expect people to get clean, in the past, when they go through treatment, we recommend, please don't drink, please don't smoke marijuana, please don't do meth, that's just the expectation. With opiates, it won't happen. They might last until they detoxed or they start feeling some, there's a lot of physical pain that goes with it because of the chemical structure change that's going on. They cannot stay clean without medication-assisted treatment. CFR, along with Community Health Center in Fort Dodge, and right now, they're just waiting on the DEA licensure, will be providing this medication-assisted treatment and working in conjunction with a staff member who pretty much does case treatment on this person that's been identified to receive this treatment. Part of this grant, we provided trainings, and this is not just us, to, well, I guess, take it back, we've done, all of our six counties, we've provided naloxone or Narcan training, and that's to reverse the effects of an opiate overdose for our first responders, law enforcement, EMS, and even family members that have somebody that has a history of addiction issues. Since October of last year, CFR, along with the other treatment agencies in Iowa, have provided trainings to more than twenty-one hundred people. Thirteen hundred people have participated in the naloxone trainings themselves and have received naloxone. So, in Hamilton County, we provided doses to the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department. A lot of it is in case they are exposed to fentanyl, heroin, any other kind of opiate that they themselves could have a reaction to. We provided it to other law enforcement, Iowa central security staff because they did have an overdose this spring, not sure that they could identify what it was. So, part of this grant requirement is, we start to get in our catchment area, catchment, fourteen is our catchment area, is a networking system that brings the local communities together to understand what's going on in each county, each city, and we're all on the same page. We did have a meeting today in Fort Dodge, and we do have a call-in option for it as well. Dayton Police Department came, Fort Dodge Law Enforcement, the Department of Corrections Prison sent people over, Iowa Department of Public Health, Calhoun County, our treatment agency, we have a city council member from Fort Dodge, we're trying to get more of the elected officials as well. Because it is also, will be impacting our economies, our local economy, whether it's law enforcement dealing with thefts, burglaries, overdoses, and this also could be related to meth. And generally, this next part of the grant is, we'll be addressing the meth issue as well. So, it's going to encompass both opiates and meth, but right now, the focus is opiates. So, just to give you an idea of what the impact is, sixty-five thousand people died of overdoses related to heroin or prescription drugs in two thousand and sixteen. Compare that to the Vietnam War, fifty-eight thousand soldiers died throughout the whole entire time. Forty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-four were killed in action in Vietnam and ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-six died by other causes. So, yeah, how long was Vietnam War? Eight, ten years?
Gulf of Tonkin in August of nineteen sixty-four to seventy-three, but we were there from forty-five on.
So, in that period of time, fifty-eight thousand people died. Two thousand and sixteen, sixty-five thousand people in the United States died of overdoses related to heroin and opioids. It's now over the number of people that are killed in car accidents each year. It's the number-one killer of people our age, middle, anywhere from young adults to even fifties and sixties now, just depending on the addiction rate. Part of, University of Iowa did a research program and death rates in Iowa saw the highest increase in Montgomery, Webster County, Harrison Counties, where the state rates increased more than two-hundred percent. This is here. Doing an interview with the Dayton Police Department last week, they reported hypodermic needles in their sewage systems. That's in Dayton, Iowa. So, the part is, is we have that information now, so maybe Humboldt didn't know about it, maybe Calhoun County didn't know about it. But now, we're kind of all getting on that same page. Department of Corrections came in today and said they're sending notes into prisoners that are dipped in liquid form of methamphetamine now. And so, that's coming into the prison system. So, we wouldn't have known that as treatment providers if that's happening. So, the purpose of this coalition is to get the networking part out, to also get out what's going on, so we're prepared for it. Part of the interviews we did as well with law enforcement is the lowest number, I think this was Belmont, like about forty-five percent, and Webster County, maybe up to seventy-five percent of law enforcement time, is dealing with thefts, civil committals, domestic violence related to substance use. So, it's like looking at, you know, when you do your budgets for your law enforcement, is how much of their time is actually spent community policing versus... is how much of their time is actually spent community policing versus chasing after everybody else because of the burglaries. And you can't always say that, you know, they had the robbery at Yes Way a couple months ago, and then there was one in a different county, there was one in a different county. Law enforcement did work together to apprehend that person. But again, part of this task force is just to get a cohesive message out to the counties that we serve, as well as give law enforcement and supervisors, as well as city governments, the opportunity to know what's coming up. Do you really have money to pay for people to overdose? Do you have money for law enforcement or EMS to go out and pick somebody up? And unconfirmed reports so far is that four people in Hamilton County this year have died of overdose related to opiates. But that's, you know, it's kind, it's here. And I'm not saying it's, everything's bad, it's just saying we need to be aware and we need to be proactive instead of reactive. Any questions on what task force we're going to tail?
I see it's eight counties, and you're looking for elected officials, like, is there, is there a board structure, or is it just kind of a...
Right now, it's just a basic coalition. We just started this in January. We will be having an opiate town hall meeting, but that's sponsored through RSVP, and that will be next, next Tuesday at Crenshaw High. We are having one, CFR sponsoring one, in Webster County next month, and that's because of, we, with our grant that we worked on, Story County and Webster County were the biggest counties in the area we had. The one in, here in Hamilton County, we will have Peter Kamandowski from the Partnership for Drug Free Iowa. He'll be here, and I'll be on the panel, as well as Doug Timmons, Shabby Cruna, Kim Stokes from the pharmacy, as well, just kind of showing what's available, what services we're doing, what's out there. The next one, on the next day, we'll have Peter Kamandowski again, but we'll have National Guard with the Midwest Counter Drug Task Force, and we'll have their local pharmacy. And then we'll actually have a treatment person there as well to talk about what actually the expectation is. So what we're looking is, is just representation from the community. And like I said, the option is to call in as well, so we don't have to worry about driving over. But it's just being, I guess it's better to be proactive and know what we could be dealing with, and maybe we don't have to ever deal with it, but then to all of a sudden be sitting here going, "We have hypodermic needles in our sewer system too." I mean, so it's just being a little proactive instead of reactive. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kay.
Are we appointing a member tonight?
Oh, she was asking if somebody would, would want to be on it, so, bonhomie?
I went to that deal last week. I'll go for a one-year period, but my time is up in 18 months.
Oh, no.
You sound like, you sound, you sound like it's a prison sentence. No, I, I think you'd be a good fit for it, Jim. I mean, again, I think it's a great topic, I just, I don't know if I'd have time, and then, I think it'd be a good...
And we'll stick to Iowa Youth Survey, it's conducted in throughout the schools every two years. In the last Iowa Youth Survey, Hamilton County youth reported, sixth graders, 5% of sixth graders misused or abused a medication, a prescription medication. Do we know that, for sure, that they understood what that meant? No, we don't know that for sure, but it could have been, "My friend made me this medication."
Or I took a teaspoon and a half to the teaspoon of coffee, isn't it?
Right, or it could be, yeah, I know, I could help myself to Grandma's meds.
Yeah.
So, you know, and that's a significant enough number to either wonder, you know, is the question off? Or is there really a big problem? And I guess, hopefully, the next round.
Is this just dealing with drugs, or is this dealing with alcohol, so?
Right now, the primary focus is opiates, and we will be getting into the meth aspect as well. We did all these assessments with opiates. And in a lot of our rural countries, we are, counties, we are seeing meth as a predominant substance. A lot of it is coming through cartels, it's coming in liquid form, and then we convert it to ice, which is a crystallized form, and then dispersed here. HIV hepatitis numbers have skyrocketed because we're now injecting. And as the prescriptions become more and more harder to get, I can get a bag of heroin for $10, and it has the same effect. And the purpose is, it's cheaper, it's economical. This is what I'm thinking as a drug dealer, not as my personal self. Oh, but that's where the movement is. And so, again, when you're using heroin, they're either smoking it, or more primarily, they're shooting it. And so then we're getting the increase of hepatitis and HIV that's significant. And we do have, currently, Atty Hill, and she is one of the, through the Iowa Department of Public Health, and she's, her focus is working on that, getting those numbers down or addressing what's going on.
Yeah, I'd be all for it, Jim, representing us on that task force.
Is that just once a month?
Once a month.
Want to make a motion on that?
I'll move to appoint, Jim.
One second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Congratulations.
I'll keep it in line.
We know you will.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Katie. Item four is a motion on request from Chamber of Commerce for fireworks permit for July 3, 2018. So.
This is the, this is the chamber's request for the community's annual fireworks events on July 3. Unless you want some really upset residents who can't see fireworks because they can't set them off on their own, strongly recommend we approve that.
Yeah. I move to approve it.
Oh, second. We're, we're lucky to have this.
Yes. Yeah, definitely.
Is VADD Supply sponsoring it again this year?
Yes, along with their sponsoring, they jived for five for patriotic music beforehand, so it's going to be a super event.
Very much appreciate their donation.
Music and fireworks?
Tuesday, July 3, so you can, the kids can all sleep in the next day.
How about the parents?
Not so much.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion approved. Item five is a motion on request from Hamilton County Fair Board.
This is our annual donation.
This is our annual donation, exactly. It's, it's a $1,000 donation to the fair board for their...
I move to approve.
Sponsorship for the... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same thing. Same sign, motion approved. Item six is a motion on request from Arts Are Alive to close Seneca Street from Bank Street to Dubuque Street on Friday, July 27th to Fri-, Friday, July 27th to Friday, August 3rd, for street painting, which is a part of the sculpture event, which will be held at Westwind Park on August 1st and 2nd of 2018. This is also the normal thing for us, this time of year.
Yeah, and it's, it's so cool, too. So it's really neat. Just maybe one year, you guys can paint lines. Just kidding, Jim, just kidding. Paint lines, and I, I move to approve.
Same. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion approved. Item seven is a resolution authorizing cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits for the 2018-2019 year. There's a whole list of them, as you would have seen.
Is anybody new?
Nobody new this year.
Okay, I just make sure. Because like, the Highway 20 was new last year, right? I move to approve.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion approved. Item eight is a resolution transferring cash to provide funding for certain projects and return balances to supporting funds and make the annual transfers of loan payments and TIF receipts and clear out funds for completed projects. This is also, seems to be a regular thing.
Yeah.
You shouldn't say that it's not a regular thing.
Yeah, it's just basically bookkeeping, right, like transferring. Unless there's anybody that objects to any of the, you know, items there I want to talk about, I, I move to approve.
The next one hurts more than this one, so.
One second.
May I ask a question on that? I'm only familiar with federal budgeting. Is there any way this could be carried forward? Or do you have to have this spent by a certain time for the fiscal year we're in? Or can you actually carry dollars forward?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's always going to say, whatever's not spent will still be in your fund balance.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay, thank you.
It's not a flex savings account.
No, but, no, I mean, I'm...
Forget you.
Unfortunately, you gotta spend it or you lose it.
It's just, doesn't look good on your, on the budgeting, when the, when the audit comes in, it's not going to look good if she's not balanced out.
We need to vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion approved. Item nine is a resolution charging off from active accounts receivable delinquency final utility bills and department charges. This one hurts more, so, but it's normal.
That's another annual.
Yeah, it's another annual thing we do.
Have, have we seen trends in this going up? Like, is it...
Listen, you know, I looked at that through the list she had, and then, and there isn't really a trend.
No, I, I don't think so. And at least we have, you know, we have a couple avenues to, to get some of the money back. You know, the Iowa income offset is, is one. And if the person would come back and try to put utilities in their name, and we would require their old bill to be payable, if it's really large, we'll do 50% and the rest of it on a payment agreement, but...
I see it's...
It's another, just, it's, it's a accounting procedure.
Is it, it does seem that some of the older accounts, some of the past years, the numbers seem to be a little higher. Is that mainly because it's, it's had more time to get that money back, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, that's what I would have thought, because it does seem to be, the longer it goes, the more money gets applied back to it. Yeah, one can only hope. Shall we have a motion?
We'll need to poll share in a second.
I move to approve.
Same. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion approved. Item 10 is a motion approving a contract with Mid-Iowa Development Association, Midus, Council of Governments to provide technical assistance to administer a community development block grant program. Do you want to bring Lindsay up for this one?
Sure.
She's well versed in this. She's sitting there, wanting to go on this one, so.
Okay. I won't, I'll have to go into a little bit more detail with the next item on the agenda, but the Iowa Income Development Authority has given us a directive to spend down some existing community development block grant funds that we've had for some time. Some of those funds are going to be revolving back in over the next five years, and they no longer want us to do revolving loans, they would like them actually spent in entirety and to have, to be able to do that as close as possible within the next five years, as those funds revolve back in. And we also have to, as usual, with, we've had other CDVT funds too, that we've worked with Midus to provide that third-party administration. It's just to check some balance, and so, all the spending, you know, goes through their approval, even though the, the money currently resides with us already, it's revolved funds from a previous old grant, so.
Anyone have any questions, well, Lindsay? Yes, Connie?
Is this part of what the paper referred to as the slum and blight elimination area?
Yeah, and I'll go into a little bit more detail about the different parts of the CDV, the Community Development Block Grant, the different national objectives, they call it. So there's three different national objectives that a community development block grant addresses. Low to moderate income, the slum and blight elimination, and then vernacular, like disaster response.
Is this...
This is, we've, we've had these funds since the early 90s, and we've been asked to come up with a new plan to spend them down, and we're just, this, this item right here is just working with Midus to be the admin for us on the spending of that.
My concern is, we're trying to brand and what the Bayleys were showing us about, "I'll get people to Webster City", "Come to Webster City where our downtown is the middle of a slum and blight area."
Well, and let me tell you, once we spend these grants down, then we'd be eligible to apply for a different community development block grant that the state administers now that's all for downtown revitalization. It's actually a $500,000 grant. But in order to get the grant, you have to document that you have a certain percentage of your buildings in that district that meet the criteria of slum and blight. It's not a desirable word, but it's not something we're going to go putting into our marketing campaign. This is just funds to use because we have them available.
Once we've, once we've spent this money on them, they won't, we won't have that area anymore, it'll be, it'll be out of that. Because it actually, it actually does, doesn't it, raises the level, because, yeah, anyway.
It's, they're, the federal government's worried, not ours. They're still addressing an issue that we do have.
This is just for Midus to administer this money, and then we'll be talking about the part you were talking about in a minute, so.
And the third-party administration is being required by the state. And if we do not wish to use those funds, or we don't want to apply them to slum and blight or other projects, then the state's going to request us, or have us, give that money back to the state.
So how much money are we talking about?
In total, the entire CDVT funds, counting the money that will be revolving back in, is 3/4 of a million dollars.
But right now, we're at like 240,000, right?
Right now, we are, a little over, around 280,000. That's not currently out in loan.
Okay, so we're going to need a motion to...
I move to approve.
One second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion approved. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing and approving execution of a real estate contract between the City of Webster City, Iowa, and Merlin E. Tunsvik. So this, this is where the slum and blight comes in.
It's one bill, it's not three.
Well, but it's, it would, would, well, anyway.
I'll explain that, I'll explain that, too. Okay, so how do I get this started here? Okay, so when I started in my position in November, one of the first tasks that I was assigned was to figure out a spending plan for these old community development block grant dollars. We are not the only rural community that struggle to spend community development block grant dollars. It's a federal program that's really better designed for cities that have large discrepancies in their, in their city between pockets of poverty and things like that. So a lot of the language and a lot of the usage criteria is thought of more of cities in mind. And so there's been a case where there's been community development block grant funds that have not been spent down. One of the unique situations with our money is that it's been in an interest-bearing account, so it's always had program income, which means that it's still federalized and, and has to be spent according to the very strict federal guidelines. Because we had just closed on a loan in December with Mary Anne's for expansion, for the additional jobs that they were adding with that expansion, we met the criteria with, they considered within this program year, because that didn't close till late December, that 70% mark of low to moderate income jobs. And, hold on a second here, is that over?
Is that a picture?
Is it on? Oh, wait, there you go.
Is that a picture you got from somewhere that's got...
Yeah, so that's the old drawing of the Elks Club. And that's what we're presenting today, is for the city to actually acquire and use some of these funds to restore the facade of the Elks Club building. So as I was talking about, the opportunity here is that we have these revolved community development block grant funds. We've had them since the early 90s. Mainly, they've been used for economic development revolving loans, and the most recent being the Mary Anne Deli Expansion in December of 2017. But now, IEDA is telling us that we have to spend this account down entirely or risk losing that money altogether. And it's not a small sum of money. So, community development block grant has three national objectives. Two really are more of concern for us today, unless something, God forbid, were to happen. But low to moderate income, and those categories have subcategories. So under low to moderate income, you have low to moderate income jobs, and that's typically economic development loans for new and expanding business, including, it could be micro enterprise, technical assistance, small business loans, up to large business loans, or grants, possibly. Low to moderate income housing, not for new construction, we can't help with that, but it is for rehab, but for, in order to do a rehab of a house, you can't do just a small thing. You have to have it completely rehabbed to back up, to head standards and things like that. So each one is going to cost around $24,000. That's sort of the ceiling that we tend to buy by. Within each single program year, so for ours, it runs from January to December, you have to spend 70... you have to spend seventy percent on categories that fall under that low to moderate income national objective. Then the other category is slum and blight elimination. And it's for the elimination of any evidence of slum and blight, you could do it on a spot or an area basis. Now, they, because in addition to the Elks project, um when those funds were revolving back in, we wanted to include the possibility of future facade grants, so for other smaller buildings. We needed to document those entire three blocks. And what I did find was that um sixty-six percent of the bill, or out of the sixty-six buildings, sorry, fifty-three percent of them actually do meet the criteria for slum and blight, and that's been confirmed by IEDA after doc, reviewing our documentation. So that is peeling paint, broken windows, crumbling brick, um things like that, that, you know, just give it a little, a little bit of a rundown feel. And we've been, you know, our community has spoken to us about the fact that our downtown has that appearance. It must be for a full facade restoration, so we were not able to just say, we'll help you get a new awning, and you can fix your windows, and you can restore your upper story windows. If you're going to do a facade with CDBG, it has to be the whole thing. And it cannot touch anything inside the building really or structural, it's just for the facade. And a lot of the buildings need more than that.
What's your definition of facade?
Facade is anything that you can actually visibly see. So it can be the sides of the building if they're exposed, the front of the building, and the back of the building. But primarily, it's looking at the face of a building as you're looking at it from the street. And again, no interior revitalization uh can be done with CDBG, unless you're getting into a project um that has some other purpose and, and then there's very limited purposes. Again, we as a community, one of the other things is you have uh a benefit to the whole area. If you have low to moderate income as an area, a complete area, then, then there's some projects that you can do. But our community, we don't meet that threshold, we are not a low, low enough um income for the whole community. We have certain census tracts that are, but on the whole, we don't meet that. So we couldn't put this money towards, say, a like wastewater treatment or any other community betterment project that would benefit the entire area. We have to be more selective. We're allowed thirty percent within each year, program year. So whatever we spend on, on um within the year, seventy percent has to go to the LMI, thirty percent can go to slum and blight elimination. So we submitted a reuse plan in March, and it included a number of different projects, the Elks Building being one of them, but also uh we'll be doing a water main repair that fits into one of the census tracts that is eligible, because the water main doesn't serve any houses that is outside of this census tract. And so we're able to save ourselves out of our city budget, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, and use these CDBG dollars, because there's residents in this area that meet that low to moderate income requirement um at the hole, according to the census. And so we're able to repair that with these funds, that was another big chunk. The state is happy when we're finding projects that are big in scale and spend more dollars at once. And this is one that's gonna benefit those residents so that they're not vulnerable, because right now that pipe is, or that water main is this um in a condition that's threatened to break. And so we can repair it, and then folks that are out in um, out in the mobile home unit area won't be without water. I know you can't see this, but there's a number of different areas that we've targeted for um using these funds. And remember, this is just a quarter of the funds almost, you know, it's a small percentage. We can't spend more than thirty percent on slum and blight. But we also have money in there for housing rehab, for um accessibility, so ramps and things for homes and businesses that need that, for ADA accessibility, um possibly, you know, LMI jobs, so business loan or grants, I guess, in this case, it's always gotta be grant. And then additional slum and blight, and then this, the area benefit one is the, the water main. So because of that recent loan to Mary Anne's, we have a unique situation where that was a substantial amount of money. But that means that we have thirty percent of that uh total amount, so take that five hundred thousand and then you would say plus two hundred and fifty thousand gives you seven hundred thousand, so breaking that out seventy, thirty, that we can use towards slum and blight. We've been advised to concentrate those funds on one high-impact project rather than spreading out over a few smaller ones for greater impact. So more of what they call at IEDA a catalyst project. There's actually a whole grant that's for catalyst building remediation. This would be one of those types of projects. Time is of the essence, because once this year passes, it's not likely that we'll have another similar opportunity. We'll be back into the reactive mode that we were, I mean, what we, the pattern we had been in is holding onto these funds for netcom development loan and then waiting for that opportunity to come, and then only spend those funds on that. If we don't spend, start the project this year, then we're not gonna be able to address something like this. I mean, we'll have to work through the rest of the plan, come up with another plan to spend another, you know, what we said we're gonna spend on the Elks Building. But chances of us being able to do something like this again are very slim. And downtown revitalization has been named as a high priority across many segments of the community. So the council has talked about it, um and in our feedback um that we've gotten from our community stakeholder meetings, across the board, people are concerned about the look of our downtown. It's turning away potential employees that come and view the community and see that it looks tired, and they think nothing's really going on here, and they don't wanna work and live in this community. So this is a chance for us to use some funds that have just been sitting there to do some good work and get something going. Uh, the condition of the building, there was water damage, substantial water damage in the back half of the building. So back where the old bar was on the main level, and in the bar area at the back of the top level. But a lot of the woodwork is still in good shape, um the tin ceilings are still there. You can see that the potential, if you're not afraid of a fixer-upper, uh you can see that it's there. But um they, they did fix the roof, but there's still some issues with a bit of a dip that needs some more support. But the substantial water damage has been slowed down.
To a garage sale.
What's that?
To a garage sale.
It looks like a garage sale, and it's full of stuff right now, and for twenty years now, it's been just basically storage for, for, for Mert, so. So here's the more, that's kind of more of the troubling brick issues happening in the back of the building. There's another view of one of the rooms that's full of stuff. I know this is hard to read for some of you, so I'll try to go through it quickly. We did have an engineer go through the building, so before we walked into this, before we bought anything, we had an idea exactly what it needed and what the issues were. There is a, there is a sag in the roof, there's already a, one support beam that was put in place before, but um that sag does need to be addressed. Ceiling, the seams in the roof membrane, and correcting the unsupported section of that roof membrane that's causing the sag. Replacing the windows and doors in the north and south walls to prevent moisture from entering. Um, and that's something we can address with CDBG funds with the facade work. Repair and seal the top, the top of the foam on the east wall, remove and replace deteriorated mortar on the northwest and south walls. Carefully rattle, prep, and seal all the cracks in the brick, everything on that first seven um we can do with CDBG. Number eight, remove and replace and deteriorate parquet cap ceilings to prevent water from entering the wall there. Remove, replace, and to repair damaged masonry units on northwest and south walls. Seal and, quote, the exterior masonry joints and units protecting from moisture on the northwest and south walls. And if foam in the east wall is not breathable or sealed, I recommend removing it, and, and then it goes into some interior things. Removing miscellaneous storage items, repair and replace damaged interior finishes. And it gets into further interior work, that's not what we're talking about doing with the CDBG funds, we're talking about the exterior. Because what the engineer told us when we sat here was that it's structurally sound, it's a good building. Um, it's got some neat architecture to it, but there's penetration through the brick in some of these gaps and seals and stuff where water is getting in, and that's gonna put it on a trajectory for demolition. Um, if that water continues to penetrate the brick, then it's going to affect the structural integrity of the building going forward. So if nothing is done soon, he said, if you don't intervene while you can, you're eventually gonna be paying for the cost of tearing that down, or somebody will, it's gonna end up having to get torn down. So it is worth it now, um but it's likely now or never. And, and to use these funds that we have available now, like I said, there's not gonna be another chance like that for a long time. At least five years before we can get that other type of economic, or other downtown revitalization grant. So it'll go a long ways in changing the destiny of this building. The reason to support this project, the community has frequently expressed concern about the de, dilapidation and demolish, demolition of our historic buildings. So the old courthouse, and there's been several buildings, and now, you know, with other buildings getting taken down, um people are starting to stress a little bit about that, and this is one of the few ones left that have a neat look about them. Initial feedback, when I've talked to some people in the community about this project, they're excited, they like the idea that Elks be insane. There's not really gonna be another product, opportunity like this for the city to intervene and invest in a project like this, a catalyst project like this. We use these funds or we lose them, and eventually we're gonna end up likely having to pay the cost of demolition and disposition. So what happens next? We've got the agreement with Midas for admin. They're, we've already got RFPs drawn up for them to release, uh for having an architectural historian assess, assess the downtown district. Just like it's a brand-new CDBG grant, we have to assess the district for historical significance, and then also the building as well. So it may or may not be designated as historical. Work has to begin, oh, and then an RFP is going out at the exact same time for an architect, architect and engineer to do the facade work, so that we're not waiting for one process and then the other, we can get going as soon as we know what we're doing. Work has to begin before the end of December in order to be eligible for the use of CDBG funds. Once that window closes, we're gonna have to scrap the project. After it's complete, the city would make the building available for another entity to restore the interior. There's some opportunities there, I mean, we, I'd like to see maybe a nonprofit group formed in this similar vein as Hero. I think there'd be enough people that would like to see that building restored to its whole gla, glory, that I think Webster City has the capability of raising funds for that. But there's also grant opportunities um that exist for interior revitalization, including, you know, enhanced Hamilton County grants. There's the catalyst grant, a hundred thousand dollar grant every uh February, uh and then the CAT grant. So once you reach fifty percent of your needed funds, then you can apply to the CAT grant, which is one of the things that the um, the, the conventions are at Birds Woods, um received. What?
That must be done.
That must be done, close enough to done. So I know it's not orthodox, well, I shouldn't say that. Increasingly, for local communities, or communities of our size, it takes a combination of both public investment, private investment, and foundation investment um to help communities flourish. And so it's not completely out of the ordinary to ask the city to intervene. If time were not of the essence, you know, maybe there's a chance we could raise the funds to acquire the building and then, and then go about it, but by the time you have an organization set up to do that and all that, our window is going to close. And that's really the reason to ask for the city to make this small investment, so that we can tap into those funds. I do believe that it's gonna have a powerful impact on the community, I think it's gonna raise the spirits to see a building like that saved. I think you'll, you'll get public support, not saying you won't get neighbors too, um but I hope you'll consider taking this opportunity.
What's, what's the anticipated projected use for the building after it's done?
There is, there is, there is a possibility, and maybe you've heard rumors, but there, there is a group that's um exploring, doing a, a cooperative, like, community-owned microbrewery, but they haven't settled on a place, and that's its own thing happening. But it's really more, it's not so much about that, what the city is gonna do at this point. So when I talked to Mert, I got him, you know, I, I talked to him about potential uses of the building, why it matters to the community. He came down to a price that he had never come down for anybody else before. We'll be able to offer up a building where half the work, I mean, that's a substantial investment if we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into restoring this facade. The likeliness of a private party coming in um and, and acquiring this building and taking it the rest away is far greater than if we did nothing at all. So, you know, it remains to be seen exactly what will happen, but it's not the city's intention to hold on to the building. And it's not the city's intention to try to raise the price, we're not gonna be asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that building, so.
It's for sale. I agree with that. It's like the, like the hospital hill, it's for sale too.
Yeah.
Putting any bites on it yet, but it's for sale.
He's been, he's received offers and turned them down in the past, or asked for a price that nobody was willing to pay. We'll get this building emptied as part of the condition, he is supposed to empty it or else he forfeits part of the price. So that helps us empty it, but that, those two things, those two things alone, not counting any efforts that the community itself might wanna put into fixing the building, getting the facade restored, getting the water damage stopped, and, and having the inside cleaned out and no longer asking for twice as much money for it, that'll make it far more likely that somebody would wanna do something with it.
Okay, anyone have any questions for?
I was gonna say, just to be clear, the purchase agreement is before you is uh purchasing the building for forty thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand dollars of that is contingent upon Mr. Tunsvik um cleaning the, the interior of all the, the items he's accumulated and the rubbish that's in there. Um, so that uh, and he has deadlines set for that of September third of two thousand and eighteen, if I'm not mistaken.
As far back as I can remember, uh, you know, the, the Elks Building has always been a, a topic of misuse and, and uh, that's a shame type of uh word it's become and how, how it's used, so um it's kind of a perfect storm really, with, with the funds, the condition of the building, and, and the, I guess, the readiness of the seller. It, it just makes sense for the city to obtain this, this piece of property, for historical reasons and downtown reasons and several others on my listing, so. I enthusiastically move to approve the purchase of this building.
I have several reservations in regard to this. If this is, the, the city has delved into real estate transactions in the past, we've uh skinned every time. And I think the question is on this, if Mert had chances to take offers, now he's gonna take ours. I guess that just makes me cynical, why not take somebody else's money and let them have the opportunity to develop it? Or let Mert do it on his own, using this resource to do it, but I don't know, I just looking at it right now, yes, it's a nice-looking building. But then in essence, we've got a white elephant, so we'll have a brand-new facade on the outside, but the inside will still be needing thousands, if not tens of thousands, dollars of work to get it up and find somebody to take it, now we're talking hypothetical situation of maybe a microbrewery, and I'm not opposed to that. But um I am not in favor of spending Webster City money to buy this building for maybe something in the future.
It isn't really our money, I, that's uh.
No, the, the, yeah, but the forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand, actually.
Is city money, and I mean, everybody thinks government money is there to be spent, but we all pay taxes for government money or fees for government money.
I think, though, that after we've spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the building, we got a good chance of, of selling it again for forty thousand.
Okay, then why can't Mert get the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get this fixed up and sell it?
Because then we lose control of the whole situation. So.
Well, and we'd be talking about an individual having to come up with that money versus CDBG money that's available, and I.
So that money has to go to a governmental agency in order to be applied to fixing?
Well, we could do a pass-through loan, just like we did Mary Anne's, right? Well, again, we would, we would have no say in what he did with that building afterwards, he could continue to use it for storage. He could continue to, to, to not have it as a, a upkeep in the inside that we may tackle or may, the new owner may tackle. But um, yeah, again, he could have a, a beautiful facade of a storage unit still, um which I think is a misuse of the building.
And then ask for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to sell it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause he could then say, well, I've spent two hundred and fifty thousand, I want two hundred and fifty thousand. But, anyway. No, it's, it's a fair call, Jim, I mean, but, you know, it's um, I guess, I had somebody else say that um we let Fuse off the hook by buying their building from him, and um you could say that that's one way of looking at it. The other way of looking at it is that we get to move forward on, on something and make, trying to make something of that corner that, that hadn't been done there before, and, and unfortunately, it's a risk, yes.
No, but you look at the booth building from the north side on the east end of the parking lot, you can see that's a firewall. That wall on the exterior, there's an interior wall for the building that was torn down. When they demol, demolish that, that's why I wanna see camera people out there, they'll look at the firewall, one is Fuse's, one was somebody else's. So, no, I guess you can go ahead and vote on it.
Well, I think, taking everything into consideration, I echo Logan's comments on wanting to see something with a building. We've got a building that we have the, an opportunity to do something with, and yes, it's, it is forty thousand and, and we're banking on the hopes of, you know, once those renovations are done, then that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that someone else doesn't have to put into the building, um versus it just being run down and, and torn down at some point. Um, I'll second Logan's motion.
I guess the only caveat I throw out again in this, I mean, we had the opportunity for three executive houses. The city got a skin for two hundred thousand dollars on those, so our interest in real, our activity in real estate has not been fruitful.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, but I think that's a completely different topic.
No, it's public money being spent.
It is, but it's also residential housing, that's not the same thing to me, so.
While we run the risk of losing forty grand, so. Why, we run the risk of losing forty grand, so... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
All right.
Number twelve.
Number twelve, resolution establishing a twenty-eight-year agreement for a shared IT director between Hamilton County and the city of Webster City.
So, this agreement and the documents included in there are pertaining to the city's shared IT director with Hamilton County. The individual is an employee of Hamilton County, and it's shared with Webster City on a rotating basis, roughly half a week every other week, in a staggered rotation, so we share them equally. The cost for the fiscal year seventeen eighteen is approximately sixty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five. The previous agreement was for a three-year agreement, this agreement is kind of moving forward to be for a one-year agreement, effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, from June thirty of two thousand and nineteen, so provides some cost savings for both the county and the city, ensuring of those IT resources and individual who coordinates our IT projects.
Is there any reason they went from a three-year to one-year?
I think they've had a couple of discussions in terms of the individual's, I guess, long-term retirement outlook, so I think that's what they're looking at in terms of that individual and his long-term outlook there, and the ability for them to transition into, I believe they're looking at a part-time person possibly to bring in to work under him, and then be able to pick that up whenever the time comes that he steps away and retires.
Well, if that arrangement's working for city administration and everyone's, you know, having their IT's, IT needs met, I'm in favor.
I think, you know, I mean, from what I understand, I mean, Kirby's done an excellent job, does this meet the department head's needs and the department needs on computer, usually when something goes wrong on a computer, the guy's ten miles away.
Yeah, I think...
I think, I mean, I've always heard positive things, but, you know, is there, I mean, has it been very positive for us?
It's worked out for the city and what we've been wanting to do, and I would admit that since I've come on, I've probably put more pressure on the department heads and the IT director in terms of what I'd like to see done from an IT perspective. In case of point, I mean, how long did it take our projection to be mounted to the ceiling where before it was just sitting on the table, and so those were some of the small things that I think I've had a different view, and have probably posed more questions to him that he was accustomed to, and just that dynamic of me being more on the very modern technology base versus what they were previously used to.
But we do have somebody in the house that can help provide support if need be, right?
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. Item thirteen is a motion on request for recreation and public grounds director, city manager, to seek bids on a one-ton pickup for the public grounds department.
Kick it over to Kent, if you don't mind.
He's got some very specific things he needs, snowplows and tillboxes.
Right, and this would be replacing about a twenty-year-old pickup that's in not real good shape on that, and we do, we think we, the way we wrote the specs, obviously the most important thing is the pickup itself, and then we would like to get, if the budget provides, a snowplow for it, as well as a couple compartments for the back of the pickup.
Would this be based pretty much on cemetery area?
Yeah, home base for all public grounds is a cemetery, but this would be primarily used by landy in the parks.
We're approving it going out to bid.
Right, with understanding that if it would, if the law's bid would be within the budget, that we would proceed.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Thanks, Kent. Motion approved. Item fourteen is a resolution accepting and approving the minor subdivision plat of Walnut Ridge Edition in Hamilton County, Iowa.
So this is a minor subdivision plan, I'll bring up the map, so if you can see the blue outline of the city limits, and if you recall, our extrajurisdictional planning boundary is two miles outside the city limits, I've tried to color-code it. This is the area in question, the red is the overall parcel, the yellow or the green is the plat that's being requested to be subdivided as part of a minor subdivision.
Could you close it? I'm trying to get a reference for that.
So, this would be Beach, essentially just straight south of Beach Street, where it turns into Inca Duda, and then it starts curving around those rural residential lots. So, for reference, Brewer Creek, or Brewer Creek, Briggs Woods is where the hand on my mouse is currently at.
Monster Road.
Is that within the two mile?
Yeah, no, I mean, uh...
Okay, it's in the two mile.
It's in the two mile limit.
Oh, we're just accepted into the two mile limit, okay.
No, they're within...
They're in the two mile limit, which is why they have to ask us.
Since it's a two-mile limit, council approves the subdivision plats.
So this will be no more cost to the city as far as plowing or maintenance now, okay. Good place for a brewery.
Okay, call for motion.
I move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. Item fifteen is a resolution accepting a warranty deed from Jack Lee Gumm and Aris M. Richardson, conveying property in southwest, southwestern a quarter of the southeast and a quarter, section two, township eighty-eight north, range twenty-six west of the fifth PM to the city of Webster City, Hamilton County, Iowa. That's a map. This is the other piece of, this is the other owners of the same piece, is it?
Yeah, that's right.
So, this would be, the council previously approved, accepting the right-of-way for the Williams piece of tract, upon recording the deed, there was some additional property owners that had not signed it. The outline is the blue outline, that's the piece that was donated, we kind of briefly mentioned at the other meeting, about the other piece of that, which is highlighted in green, that would be the extension of Link's Avenue connecting down to Collins, so that we're still working on.
And what do we want to do with the land?
Well, eventually it'll be a right-of-way for a future road, that whomever develops that piece of ground would be required to develop the road.
We started this, or Ken started this, because at one stage they were going to close Wall Street because of the construction on Beach Street, so we were looking at a way to get, to get the people from Wall Street through in town, so we started looking at this, you know, a year ago or something. And it's, that our Wall Street thing's pretty well over and done with, because they got the second half this week, didn't they?
Yeah, they're most important this week.
So, so by the time we get this done, it'll be just done for the future, because we're not going to use it, so...
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. Item sixteen is a resolution approving change order number three to the Union Street Hot Mix Asphalt HMA Overlay Project for Fort Dodge Asphalt Company, Fort Dodge, Iowa.
So this is, if you recall, Fort Dodge Asphalt was in town, working on several pieces, or several projects, the biggest one being the Union Street resurfacing, so this is approving change order number three, which essentially is the final tally of the actual usage materials that were used in the various projects, there was a few that were over that accumulated to eleven thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents.
Kent, call for motion. Does anybody have any questions?
Nothing's changed from what we moved forward with, to make that answer. I move to approve.
They're pretty much finished with that, though.
Yeah, all the asphalt properties completed.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. Item seventeen is a resolution accepting work authorizing payment of final estimate with the final retainment in the amount of nine thousand five hundred and eighty-three sixty-nine in thirty days to Fort Dodge Asphalt Company of Fort Dodge, Iowa, for the completion of the Union Street Hot Mix Asphalt HMA Overlay Project.
So, tied to the previous motion, you guys just approved, this is the specific project tied to Union Street Overlay Project, total project cost came in at a hundred and eighty-eight thousand nineteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
And we're happy with it? We're good?
Yeah, yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. Item eighteen is a resolution, repealing resolution number twenty-sixteen dash zero-six-four, and establishing fees for services beginning July first of two thousand and eighteen.
So back in two thousand and sixteen, the council had approved a resolution for the various services and costs, such as cemetery burials, fees at Fuller Hall, fees with the police department, such as unlocks, fees that we use internally for accounting purposes, such as with our public works, whenever a crew gets called out to, say, the vehicle that struck the light pole, and then the costs are assessed back to the owner or the insurance company for repair or replacement. We originally had an order, a resolution that was set to continue through two thousand and eighteen, we let back on some of those fees, and we made some changes and clarified some things, some did increase slightly, for, one for clarification, but also just to conform with the costs that are actually associated. Other items were clarified, where you had duplicate items, say, a dump truck in the street department and a dump truck in line department that had different costs, we went back and we made sure that there was a single cost for those items that are similar, and this encompass vast majority of the fees that you find at Fuller Hall and their recreation
This is just for one year versus three years that we've done before.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. Next section is D, reports and recommended issues of officers, boards, and commissions. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item one is a motion to accept and place on file the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Two is a motion to accept and place on file for financial May reports, finance treasury report, bank reconciliation report, investment summary, FSB ICS savings, public fund account, FSB statement, utility cash statement, and receipts. And three is a motion to accept and place on file city manager reports, May reports, electric, waste water, water, electric year-to-date and water year-to-date, code enforcement. Four, what is it? We got four. Motion to accept and replace on file the police department May reports. And five is a motion to accept the place and file the fire department May report. And six is a motion to accept and place on file the Hamilton County Solid Waste Commission June agenda packet. How would you like to do one through six?
Move to approve one through six collectively.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. It was, any other committee reports? How was your golfing?
Oh, really good.
Is that frothing?
Frothing?
Yeah, we had, I think, a little north of thirty frisbee golfers come down, more so in the team event than the morning individual event, but it was a great turnout, I know the youth advisory commission was just shooting for twenty-plus, and we hit that, so we thought it was a success, but yeah, it was a great day, hot, but it was a great day.
Good deal. Any other?
Yeah, I would like to compliment our public works, Kent, Kim, and, you know, on this deal on R-27 Beach Street, I retired, so I get to drive around a lot, and so I kind of made the ride today, and they're pretty much putting the finish in the shoulders coming in from the south, so between the city and the county, they did a good job on it, except for Zach's corner, we're trying to hold that up for a few more months, other than that, they did, I mean, everything looks good, so I want to compliment you guys, your Shimmer, Zach.
Item E is other items sent to council, it was a fair parade, did you want to...
Just letting you know that the fair parade request came in, and once I receive the okay from street, police, fire department, I'll get that permit issued, but...
It's for July twenty-fourth at four p.m., is it?
Same route, yeah, same route and same time.
Yes, Connie. Of the, for the fair parade?
It's probably on the...
We don't have it right here with us, but...
Okay, parade, I assume it's going to go down Prospect Street yet?
I would say so, yeah.
Okay, First Street, Division Street, Bank Street, going on south, those three are one-way streets, and the street department goes and puts the cones right on the sides of Prospect Street, and when you're coming down Division Street from the west, you get all the way down Division Street before you get to the cones. The cones need to be back at the west end on Broadway, so you don't enter Division Street. Right in the middle of the parade, a year or two ago, a pizza delivery person came roaring down Division Street, and of course broke through the parade route. When you get to First and Bank, the cones shouldn't be at the west end of First and Bank, which is adjoining Prospect Street, they need to be down at Des Moines Street so that people don't head down the one-way street and get stopped at the parade.
See what you're saying, yeah.
Thank you, I've told that, I don't know how many times, and it, year after year after year, the cones are put right along Prospect Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll make note, thank you, Connie. Okay, anything else? Call for motion.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye. Those, same sign. Move adjourn, thank you, everybody.